At this time, I would like to call the Gaston City Council meeting to order. We are not able to livestream the meeting today, but it will be available on the usual channels, Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. And just as a reminder, if you don't mind making sure that your cell phone is turned either off or to the vibrated position. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order, and I will proceed to call the roll. Councilwoman Latham?
Present.
Councilman Smith?
Present.
Councilwoman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Minatra?
Here.
And Councilman Robinson?
Here.
We have a forum present, and our meeting is open for business. At this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Tommy Marshall to come forward and lead us in the Please stand and remain steady for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Mr. President, Father, we've come to you today, and we're so thankful that we know that when you're moving, how you're moving in our midst, that we can rejoice. Lord, there's many things you've said in your word, and we know that you're in control of all things in this great city and the City of Champions, Father, and we just thank you, and we believe that in our heart. I pray for all these newly appointed councilmen and council ladies and all these that are a part of the strategies and the moving forward of this great city. Lord, I thank you that there are going to be things that you're going to be whispering to them, and they're going to hear that and be led, and I thank you they have a heart that's bent toward that and want to see you have your way in this place, in this city, and all the people, Lord, that they would know that as they do, they love their neighbors as theirself, and as they put their heart into this. You said that you formed them in their mother's belly, and that word "form" means divide elements, all their abilities, all of the things that they have that they can use in these great positions that they hold, and, Father, that your word, your purpose, your plan would be done through it all, in Jesus' name. I pray covering over them and over this city and all this ahead, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and the City Council meeting held on November the first.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to approve minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October the 28th through November the 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts. Our first order of business today is to entertain nominations for the election of Council President. Are there any nominations?
Nominate Kent Back.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations to be made? The Chair will entertain a motion for nominations to be closed.
So moved.
Okay. Those in favor, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to close the nominations. Now, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt a resolution electing Kent Back as Council President.
So moved.
That's Resolution 2022 for 12.
Second. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, and the resolution stands adopted. And at this time, I'm going to give the gavel to our new Council President, Kent Back.
Thank you, federal council members, and thank you, Iva Nelson. The Chair will entertain nominations for election of Council President pro temp. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Steve Smith.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor for Steve Smith to be President pro temp, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
The Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt a resolution electing Steve Smith as pro temp.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Next on the agenda is proclamations. Mayor Ford, do you have any proclamations today?
No, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number 10, unfinished business. A resolution amending employee handbooks for fire, police, public works, administrative and clerical, and management employees. This resolution was tabled for 30 days on October the 4th. What is the pleasure of the council?
Mr. President, given the unique nature of the transition here with several new members, I think it'd be best for us to table this for another 30 days, just to give everybody an opportunity to fully review it. So I make a motion that we table this for an additional 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor should table the resolution for an additional 30 days. Let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Number 11 on the agenda is a resolution electing City Clerk and Treasurer. This resolution reappoints Iva Nelson for a term ending on November the 2nd, 2026. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? With enthusiasm. Clerk, will you take the vote, please?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, at this time, it gives me great pleasure to ask my longtime neighbor and longtime friend and retired City Clerk Martha Elrod to come and administer the oath of office for Iva Nelson.
I tried to lure her out, didn't I?
Yes, ma'am, you did. I'm saying, sorry.
Repeat after me.
Aye. Aye. In the name of the- Iva Nelson solemnly affirm-
To support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution-
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
And the Constitution of the State of Alabama.
So long as I continue.
So long as I continue.
A citizen thereof.
A citizen thereof.
And that I will faithfully and honestly-
And that I will faithfully and honestly-
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
Of the office upon which I'm about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you so much. Number 12 on the agenda is a resolution authorizing retention of employees. This states that the current officers and employees will continue as the new administration begins. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 13 is a resolution authorizing continuation of depositories. This also relates to the beginning of the new administration and provides that the current depositories will remain in effect. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 13 is a resolution authorizing continuation of depositories. This also relates to the beginning of the new administration and provides that the current depositories will remain in effect. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 14 on the agenda is a resolution adopting rules of procedure for council business. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to make sure nobody snuck anything about wearing hats during council meetings. No?
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 15 on the agenda is another resolution authorizing reimbursement for use of vehicle by the mayor. This authorizes Mayor Ford to be reimbursed $750 per month for the use of his personal vehicle in performing mayoral duties. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just for point of clarification here, the this amount for the monthly lease for the mayor's vehicle has not been updated in quite some time, so until Mayor Ford can find the appropriate vehicle and we can adjust this, we're just going to be reimbursing him for the amount of money that would normally go towards his mayor's vehicle for use of his personal vehicle. So, 750 bucks a month.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 16 on the agenda is a resolution creating and amending job classifications. This adds the job classification of Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, and Director of City Services, both at pay range 23. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
Again, it's my understanding that both of these individuals will report directly to the Office of the Mayor.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 17 on the agenda is another resolution authorizing special use permit for Verizon Wireless. This is for modification of equipment at the existing wireless telecommunication facility located at 1937 Spring Rock Street. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 18 is a resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between Gaston Etowah County Emergency Management Agency and various facilities for Safer Places program. This is regarding the use of certain churches and facilities to be made available to the public prior to and during a severe weather event. These will not be shelters, but will provide a safer place for nearby residents. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just point of clarification, this authorizes the memorandum of understanding between the EMA and these locations. There's no money involved in this, so those individuals that are those churches or other locations that operate as a safer place, they aren't compensated by the city. We're just entering into agreement with them to do so. Correct.
Right, that there's no liability in council and aggravation. Ms. Gathan, would you like to explain any further about the shelters?
No, sir, unless you have questions.
So I'm just giving you an opportunity, but thank you. Clerk, will you take the votes?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Number 19, resolution authorizing acceptance of Department of Homeland Security grant. This is to be used for the community emergency response teams, the CERT program, and the amount is $17,624. The grant period is November 1st, 2022 to October 31st, 2023. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known the saying, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Item number 20 is a first reading of an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget. This reflects receipt of the Department of Homeland Security grant for the CERT program and appropriates the money to the correct expenditure accounts, the amount of $17,624. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. All right, number 21 is new business. Anyone have any new business? All right, there being none. Number item number 22 is the department reports, committees or boards, any department heads. Any committees have any reports? There being none, okay. Item number 23, we've had a sit-in request, Dr. R. Gary Ashley, to come and speak to the council. Please come forward, Dr. Ashley. When you get to the mic, if you'll please state your name and your address, and-
I don't want anybody to know where I live.
I hope we get you in five minutes.
Okay, guys. Gary Ashley, 2618, Glendale, Gaston, Alabama. I have a few things I just want to share with you, but I want to recognize someone who hasn't been recognized very much, and that's Ms. Ira. Last night I was watching television, my phone rang about 8:00, and I answered it, and she says, "Is this Dr. Ashley?" And I said, "Well, yeah, I think so." But she called to remind me that I was on the agenda for today. And I want you to know that you may think you run the city. She runs the city up here for us. That's what job she does. Five things I want to say very quickly at the end. One thing, I want to thank each of you for your willingness to serve in this capacity. Being a political leader is not easy. Some of you who have already held office know that, and the rest of you are about to find out very quickly how difficult it is. Congratulations for being elected. You're sitting in those chairs because the people, citizens of Gaston, elected you to serve them in these capacities. I know it's hard running for office. I ran for City Council some time ago, got beaten sadly, and so I know how hard it is for you who have run off. So congratulations that you're there. I want to say something to the council persons, Dixie included here and other precious ladies. Please focus on what is best for our city, not just your individual districts. The way you get real legacy is by cleaning out ditches, putting in parks, and putting in streetlights, and paving roads, and all that sort of stuff. But we need to work together for the benefit of our city. The next thing I want to say has to do with a long-range plan. The reason I ran for City Council a few years ago, because I looked at Gaston and realized the city this size had no long-range plan. And, Mayor, I appreciate what I heard you say earlier about developing a plan. And I know that all of you have plans and strategies, things you want to do very quickly. Let me encourage you, maybe hit the pause button for just a minute, and determine where it is we're wanting to go as a city, and then devise a plan to get us there. Without a long-range plan, you're like a ship without a rudder. You'll find yourself being constantly reactive instead of being proactive. You'll be like a ball in a pinball machine, here, there, here, and yonder. But if you have that long-range plan that I heard the mayor talk about earlier, and you work together, we have a wonderful city here. Today's been a good day for the City of Gaston. Would you agree with that? It's just been a great day for our city, with optimism and hope and camaraderie. But the last thing I want to share with you is this, and this is the most important thing. I just wanted you to remember that there is going to be a day of accountability for each one of you. I know that as a pastor, I bear that in mind every day. The day is going to come that I'll have to stand before God, and I'll have to give an account to Him for the way I live my life and the way I was ministering in the church. You may not know this, but the Bible uses the same word for you that it does for me and the church. We're ministers. I'm minister to my flock, you're ministers to this city. And the day will come that you'll have to stand before God and give an account. I want that to be a good day for me, and I want it to be a good day for each of you. I thank you for your time, let me share, and I want to whisper just a quick prayer in closing. Father, I thank you for these individuals that will lead our city at least the next four years. Father, I pray to give them wisdom beyond the wisdom that they have. I pray that there'll be camaraderie and unity among this group. Father, give them your vision for our city and where we are and where we need to go. Father, there'll be difficult days ahead, there'll be problems ahead, but Father, give them strength and stamina. Father, thank you for being our God, and thank you for this new day in the City of Gaston, and as a cross name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. We've come to number 24, which is remarks by the mayor and council. It gives me great pleasure to recognize and start with our mayor, Mayor Ford.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the council, thank you all. I don't know if y'all know this, last night we had a meeting up in City Hall, and City Hall's on a border system, so when the air goes off, you have to switch it to the heat and switch it back just one time to the air. So we sat in a furnace last night, and they conducted business from what we observe. But seriously, I look forward to working for you and with y'all, and try to do everything we can do in your districts of what you want to do. I'm excited. There's energy in this town, there's hope, and we plan to capitalize on it. I just want to be honest with y'all, I'm going to be not rude, but as soon as this is over, I'm taking off with my family, my daughter, and my daughter-in-law, and all of them are about to leave out of town, I'm going to have lunch with them, so I'm not being rude, but thank y'all very much. And Jason, we have a meeting with that group this afternoon, so I'll keep the council abreast of what comes of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilwoman Latham?
Yes, let me say I count it an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity. Thank you for being here today. Thank you again to the constituents of District 1 for this opportunity. Let me say to Mayor Ford and to the other council members, I look forward to working with you, and I am excited, enthusiastic, and have anticipation and expectation for the wonderful things that are about to take place in our city. Thank you.
Councilman Smith?
Yes, so thank you once again to all the citizens that voted for us, but we also would echo what we had earlier, we're just not here in a certain district too, but the entire city. We thank our new mayor, and we look forward to working with him. So glad to hear his vision as he's rolling it out, and to all these fellow council persons. I'm just excited and enthused about working with them to do the best we can to continue to serve, to make our city better. So thank you for seeing so many faces. I know some of it is because we're new, but certainly we hope that we'll continue this tree going forward. So thank you.
Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. District 3 citizens, thank you so much for our hard work through these two elections to bring forth this day, family, friends, and mentors to District 3 and other districts around in the city. Recently, we have had a few killings and shootings. There must be some change, okay? We must find a way to come together. We must find a way to shed a different light onto our city, okay? Young people, we must, we must do better in addressing issues concerning you and your families. Whereas we make, or I will make also in conjunction with my fellow comrades here concerning the city, I have a strong focus on District 3. For quite some time, District 3 has been the stepchild of the city, and we are in desperate need of unity concerning our community, but we're also in desperate need of unity concerning the necessary resources and needs in our district, okay? So I gear focus on those issues, and I will work hard concerning those issues and be very strategic in so. Outside of that, to not be on soapbox long, tomorrow is voting, and it's very important that we consider going out and make sure that we put in state representatives that will not only represent the state, but also as this new mayor and council bring some things forward that is to progress the City of Gaston, that those representatives have us in mind, okay? So be mindful to not only go vote yourself, but everyone in your household, family and friends close by. It is very important that we continue this race. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. Just one quick point of clarification, and I like to do this, and some people thank me profusely for it, and some people tell me that I think they're all idiots, but this continuation of depositories motion that we approved, all that does is make sure that all of our bank accounts stay active and legitimate, and they're still open until Mayor Ford has the opportunity to go in and sign all the signature cards and all that stuff, so just a point of order. Other than that, thank you all. I see a lot of elected officials and dignitaries in the room, and some people that I've known a long time that just wore a suit today, so they look a little nicer than they normally do, but welcome, and thank you all for showing up. What a great turnout. Councilman Back and I were talking about the difference between four years ago and this year, the attendance at this event. It's probably five times as many people as I remember from four years ago, and I like to give Mayor Ford most credit for that, but to throw Ms. Iva under the bus, since we were on the stage earlier, I said, "Ms. Iva, there's a lot more people than were here four years ago." She said, "Yeah, well, you know Greg, if he's-" Oh, Matt Walmart, he's going to invite him to the meeting." Glad y'all came out. Thank y'all for being here. I'm excited to be working with everybody up here. Congratulations, Councilman Back, I'll be the name of the council president. I'm not sure if it does a hot potato he actually wants, but he's got it. So congratulations, and I look forward to working with all you guys. This is going to be fun.
Councilwoman Minatra?
And I would just like to say that I'm so appreciative of the people that are here today that work tirelessly on our campaign trail, for all of the folks on this table. We are so appreciative of everything that you did to get us elected, and we will not let you down.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes, thank you everybody for being here. I would just love to say I'm super excited about this new council, and the mayor, and the remarks that will make the day where we're going to take this thing for years. Ask us to make goals, monthly goals, yearly goals, four-year goals, and, you know, at the end of those goals, look back and say, "This is what we've done, this is where we're going." Appreciate everybody for District 7, the whole time I've been running, I've been for District 7 probably, I think, two times, two turns, eight years I've been going for it. Glad to finally be here. Respectful that Mr. Reed did a great job in his long tenure for District 7, and I look forward to serving all of District 7. And can't wait to get started. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, reiterate what's already been said. Thank you for a great day in Gaston. I thank you, Mayor Ford, for the strong and energetic vision that you have passed. Man, if you can't be excited about Gaston right now, you need to check yourself, okay? See if you can pop a mirror, because great things are just about to happen in the City of Gaston, so it's going to be an exciting time to live here. It's going to be even more exciting to get to serve you, the people that have put us in these offices, so thank you all very much. Just a little bit of housekeeping. Gaston City High School football team is in the state playoffs. We won last Friday night. We play Mountain Brook right over here at Titan Stadium this Friday night. Everybody needs to be there. It's going to be a big game. Those young men need our support, and we need to be there to show them that we believe in them, and Coach Ollie Smith and his staff, and Mr. Kevin Young, the principal of the school, and everybody over there, y'all. We have one high school in the City of Gaston. Let's get behind her and let's support that team, and the cheerleaders and the band, some 200 to 300 students out there marching and playing. Lot of stuff happening over there, a lot of good things. We have a new baseball stadium over there, a new softball field over there. Big investment from the school board. Thank you, guys, for what you've done. Do want to recognize all of our elected officials. I see County Commissioner Insert over here and many others. We appreciate y'all being here, and the invitation that Mayor Ford extended is a great start to all of us working together to make our city and our county all that it can be. Just two more little housekeeping items here. The city will observe the Veterans Day holiday on Friday, November 11th, which will change the garbage schedule. Thursday's route will be collected on Wednesday, November 9th, and Friday's route will be collected on Thursday, November 10th. Also, due to the National League of Cities Conference, next week's meeting will be held for the council meeting. The location of the meetings will be the council chamber at City Hall. There's no further announcements? Ms. Iva, you have anything?
No.
Well, just to keep with tradition, because I'm kind of super suspicious when it comes to sports, I just want to say good afternoon to everybody except the Mountain Brook Spartans. I've done that three weeks in a row, it's worked, I want to keep going.
I like that, that's good. Well, thank you. With all that, we will be adjourned. So moved.